Welcome to our regularly scheduled Mayor Council meeting for Monday, November 24th, 2025. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the ledgers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think the first item on our agenda is getting approval of the minutes from the regular session of November 10th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second motion by Councilmember Ors. Second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes, let the record reflect that the vote's unanimous with Vice President Burrell absent. Up next, I do want to add a announcement to this agenda item. We forgot to put on the Municipal Government Works proclamation for November before the packet was released at the last meeting, so I asked the staff to just hold it until this meeting. But I do want to read that for the month of November. Wow. So whereas the town of Berlin was incorporated in 1868, and Maryland is home to 157 municipalities; and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have correct access to elected officials; and whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Berlin is proud for both municipal government awareness; and whereas municipalities like the town of Berlin have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, and explore; now therefore we proclaim that the Mayor Council of the town of Berlin hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League in declaring November as Municipal Government Works Month in the town of Berlin. So really, what this means is that the folks every day that work hard in our town departments to serve the people of Berlin, the work that the council and mayor's office do to help make sure that it's responsive to the citizens and gets the work done that you all trust us to do, this is just to help raise awareness of that. So thank you truly to the staff that we have in the town of Berlin and the citizens that are always engaged. So Jack, I think you have your question. All right. So up next is Agenda Item 2, and that is the items for approval. Before each one of these are actioned, there will be the opportunity for public comment. So Agenda Item 2A is a special one-day permit application for the Bog Stitch Room Post 123, private member party on Sunday, January 18th, 2026. And do we have the event organizer? Just come forward if you don't mind. And that's Mr. Greenwood, right?
Yes.
Let the siren go first. Actually, break here to this table if you don't mind. You can go ahead and have a seat and use the microphone if you'd like to tell us what we need to do with the sirens. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Is there anything you would like to add to the event?
No.
Motion one, chief.
No, it's, uh, we don't, we're not open on Sundays, but we do, we can get permits with approval in downtown Snowville. But this event is, uh, it's for my wife. She has dementia. And I was able to get the fan that she recognizes.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. We appreciate you coming and sharing.
I'm also the service officer up there, and I got steel with the flagpole for you.
Thank you. And we're sorry to hear about your wife's diagnosis, but it's very, very nice that you're doing that for her.
It's the hardest thing I've ever done.
I think only that. Just make sure you're taking care of yourself in the process.
Yeah.
All right. So let's, uh, any public comment regarding the Item 2A, special one-day permit? All right. If not, let's get it actioned by the council.
Motion to approve.
So a motion by Councilmember Ner, second by Councilmember Ors. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes, let the record reflect that the vote's unanimous with Vice President Burrell absent. Thank you. And if there's anything we can do to help spread the word, is it a private event?
Yes, it's private. It's, uh, she, it's people that she recognizes, like the everyday thing.
That's beautiful.
Thank you.
If there's anything we can do at the mayor's that, that is probably we can help spread the word about the mental awareness or whatever.
I've only been in here once. I came, I think we had our house built six years ago in Henry's Mill.
Okay.
Welcome.
And you're welcome anytime.
Oh, I love it.
You're welcome anytime. Well, I think that's everything, but if anything comes up, you feel free to check.
Okay, now, I need, how do I get the paper?
Oh, do we have any?
You can sign it right now.
Sign it now. That way you don't have to make a special.
Yeah, I have to carry that to Snowville with a hundred dollars to get the permit.
Can you make it?
And thank you for the flagpoles.
Yes, thank you so much. Review. All right. So Kayla, Kayla, will you help me? Into the conference room where she'll make the copy, and then you'll be ready to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Up next, Agenda Item 2B, and that is a request for reduction in stormwater fees by Solter Solar. And Vista Design Steve Engel is here tonight, if you want to come forward. And Mary, do you want to tee it up or do you want them to?
I can, I can just review. To my, their letter really obviously gives far more of an explanation. Mine is just a summary, mostly accounting for what your options are considering. So they're requesting a reduction in the stormwater permit review fee based on nature of the project, which is a solar farm is something we have not dealt with before. I don't know when our ordinance was written, but I think that solar farms, at least for us, are quite new. So it was not something that was even considered at the time with the ordinance or the review or, yes, the review fee schedule. They will present their argument for reducing the fee. Your options are to leave it as is, not reduce it, have a reduction. They're kind of outlined in the, in the staff report, but it's, it's, listen to, to what they have to say and go from there. Darrell is also here, who can speak to the town's stormwater ordinance with more authority, and go from there.
Thank you. Go ahead. Gentlemen, just introduce yourselves and positions for the record, please.
Steve Engel, Vista Design.
Thank you.
Brian Auger, Vista Design.
Thank you. And anything you want to add to your letter?
First of all, thank you for hearing our request. I'm not used to coming before a board and asking for a reduction in stormwater management review fee.
It's a good thing to add to the resume.
But in this case, I think it's justified. In your packet, you'll see guidance from the state of Maryland for stormwater design for solar farms, which this project can be designed to be simplistic design. There are no bio-retention facilities, there are no gravel wetlands, there are no closed stormwater management drainage systems. Essentially, what happens is the water runs off the solar panels and then goes up on the ground and goes into the grass underneath the next panel, which is considered a disconnect, meaning the requirements for stormwater management. There's just not a lot of time and reviewing a lot of calculations. Even though this is a large project, it just isn't the time required to review a stormwater management plan at this stage.
Thank you. So now, just for clarity and for the record, there underneath the surface of the panels is going to remain grass, correct?
That's correct. Actually, it'll be planted in a pollinator seed mix. I think it might get moved maybe once a year, but it's supposed to remain grass.
Thank you. Darrell, anything you want to add from your perspective with EA as a consultant for the town?
Um, what Steve outlined, I agree with. The nature of the project is pretty straightforward. I'm familiar with the guidance for solar fields, it's a specific MDE guidance. So yeah, correct, there's not a stormwater facility to say that we're guiding through. So yeah, the nature of the request is, I think I tend to agree with, that, you know, it would be less effort than a large-scale stormwater review.
Thank you. Any public comment regarding Agenda Item 2A or 2B? Anything I'm looking up for discussion by the council?
So I had asked Mary, around to review county charges. Could you convey that information?
The county for solar projects, they charge four dollars per 1,000 square feet of disturbance, minimum fee of 700.
And what would this project yield?
This project, um, the calculations that we have are, um, we're charging 15 dollars?
No, it's the next line down. The greater than 220,000.
Oh, it's greater than?
Yes.
Okay, so four dollars per 1,000 square feet.
So there was a number of those. Was it approximately the same? Yes, the county, actually, the newest rate that they shared beforehand today is the same as ours. They're, they're identical, the calculation and the rate.
Any other discussion, other county?
Well, the thing that, so it's fair to say that this was a, I guess, I'm waiting for Darrell for you guys to, if this were a housing community or a commercial development, the same amount of square footage, Bureau of Maintenance, the stormwater review fee would be, the time would require a lot more than what we're requiring of the current project before. Fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what the waiver request is, that you're saying that we're not going to need as much time, as much resources to review this as it would, if it was, maybe what the code was designed for, which is more for multi-use communities or some along those lines, correct?
That's correct. And Darrell, let's concord with that.
Yes.
So you know, we said we're, in the past, we have reviewed our fees, and we usually always consider our time, how much it costs us, and then we usually consider it an administrative fee percentage increase. So our research has shown that the, the review of this project would be considerably less than what our code states, correct?
I think that's the first thing.
Yeah. So an attorney, attorney. So this data I have. Okay. So let me ask you guys, we're concerned about the precedent that it would set. How would you respond to that?
I understand that, but again, this solar project has been designed according to the MDE design standards. Just isn't a lot of calculations or facilities for EA to have to review.
Right.
The really, essentially just going to, I guess, take a look at the graded plan to make sure we meet the group disconnect distance and have the required details on the plan, but it just, in a normal project like you talked about, a single-family or commercial development, would have numerous stormwater managed facilities, bio-retention areas, gravel wetlands, or a closed system, all of those having various specific calculations that go along with them, but in this case, we don't have any of those calculations.
You could argue too, there's some uniqueness that our code really doesn't account for because there aren't many places where you can put a large-scale solar project in municipal limits.
And I think it would be fairly easy for us to incorporate a solar farm as a definition and, and handle it on our fee schedule as a, as a specific and unique project. If the precedent of setting of doing this, gosh, I'm old, I'm old. If this sets a precedent, the argument for that would be this is a solar farm, so unless someone's requesting solar farm, the consideration would be different.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And your request is to take the fee to 100, let's go over that, please.
EA estimated time of approximately 4,400, and I apologize, I just realized I did not do the math. We usually have an admin overhead cost of five to 10%. So I would say that 5% would be reasonable.
Right. So the request is to take it down from the 19,577.60 to somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000. Is that correct?
We figured, we figured about 40 hours to review, based on our hourly rate, and that was about 5,500.
We'll go with that number then.
So the request is to reduce the fee from 19,577.60 to 5,500?
That's correct.
Town staff's okay with it?
Plus administrative fee.
Well, I think that is the administrative fee, from 4,400 to the 5,500.
I think we would, we would not lose anything. We would not be in any of this.
And Darrell, you're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So if the council seeks to make a motion reducing that fee, I would do so at this time.
I, um, I tend to disagree. A solar farm is commercial. We already have a designation for commercial. The county does not, from what I understand, offer revisions or anything, and we are at the same level they are. Is this farm going to help our utility, our electric utility?
So the way that this farm would work is it would feed into DPNL.
So around.
We do have some DPNL customers that are also in municipal limits, but the number's much lower.
I think they would not directly give a benefit.
Now, however, there is upside to the solar farm in the sense of property taxes. And, um, and then you can think about the fact that the solar farm really doesn't require much in services, so you get that side of.
We're not going to crack that later.
No, no, I'm saying like, we don't think of their trash. Like, on a typical commercial scale, a commercial space, the, the cost of serving that customer is a little less than what you would if you were serving a traditional commercial space. Now, I think one thing for clarity, this is a review fee. This is not a reduction in stormwater fees as a whole, it's just reducing the review fee process.
Correct.
So I think that's an important distinction.
So I think if we're going to approve this, I think we need to take the statement that Mary just made a minute ago, that we create a stormwater page or line item somewhere in wherever the great book of ledgers are when it comes for future, because I don't think you'll be the last people to come for it, not just the phone logistics here after we're gone.
That's a valid point. Yeah, I'm not too sure whether.
So your, the suggestion right now is going from 19,500 to 5,500?
Or at least, so that it, so that it ranges, because the 19,500 wasn't just a, it wasn't a standard number, it was based upon the size, correct? Like the configuration, am I right on that?
No, that number was.
That's time to review.
Hours.
Okay, the hours. So, so I guess that the, this wouldn't be a standard, it would be based, then again, whatever the formula is, would be generated, whatever formula we use this time would have to go into play for whatever happens in the future.
It really would be a formula? This would be a one-time motion that you make and.
And then somebody's, and then, okay. Oh, so this would be advice for everybody in this.
No, 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 only for this question. Okay.
But to your point, Councilmember Nichols, in the, what we could do is add that for storm, or for solar projects and give a size, right?
Right, right.
Because the, the size of girls' project is pretty vast, like, you're not going to match that really in town.
It's not likely that another project of that size would be in town.
Right. That if we, we would bill for the hours of review required and plus charge for the administrative side.
We never know. We hope not.
That's true.
Can you briefly review the project? How many solar panels? How much you expect it to make? It's in the packet, but not for everyone to see. Can you review the project just briefly? What it entail?
Um, it's, I mean, it's a large-scale solar project, and it's got some gravel roads to access some of the panels. The racks for these panels must be quartered by, close, that would be driven into the ground, and the racks are attached to piles. So the only real disturbance you have is, is the gravel that you're going to be laying down for access. You've got some small concrete pad that you're going to pour for some certain equipment. But it's not like your normal earth-moving project, like you would have for a single-family or a commercial development. You just don't have that type of earth movement going on for solar projects.
But then answer your question, 18 megawatts?
Yeah, the, yeah, the whole project is 18 megawatts, and the, the project size is 157 acres. Now, about 157 acres, less than 2% is the pervert. So a lot of it is remaining as is without, you know.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you, did you state the move for the?
Brian, it's all good.
Okay. I just wanted, I couldn't remember.
That's okay.
Let me make sure it's on the recording.
All right. So up to the council, whether we, whether we reduce that fee or not.
I think we should. I'd say make the motion to, what's, what's this one?
Take it from 19,577.60 to 5,500. And I believe you also wanted the creation of a stormwater review documentation for us so that we have some standard about how we apply this moving forward.
Mm-hmm. For the review process, not anything other than that, yes.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols. Do you have a different?
We have a different number.
And do you have something different in mind? And what's the rationale? Like, I, I mean, really, this is a one-off, we really don't know, so I'm, I'm really open to that.
I guess I'm basing it on what the county charges. So as we look at projects, there's going to be a variation of how much time is required to review these projects. Sometimes, like, in this case, it may not be much, in other cases, it could be even more. I, you know, I hate to set this precedent. I understand it's a solar field and the details behind it, but I just think.
So you didn't.
Just to set precedent, which is wrong.
I can see both sides of it. I mean, that's why I always say no easy decision makes it to this level, right? So it's really kind of our take on it, right? Because I see their point, but I also understand the precedent that goes along with it and the factors at play that, of how we arrived at our formula.
And, and you're here representing the company that's doing the project.
That's correct. So we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, but it sounds like we have some.
You don't have to agree.
Some feedback on tailoring some of that.
You really don't.
So to me, this is about, we have said so many times up here that our fees are set to account for time and the administration, so I feel like we're, you know, we're making a, going to make a lot of money on this review, honestly, for, we're going about 19,577, and we know that that's not what it's going to cost us. That's what I have a problem with.
I could add something, please. By state law, we can only adopt fees to account for the administration costs. They're not, not to be used as a revenue, that would be a leave. So there, that's to your point.
And to clarify, in something like this, part of the administrative cost is the professional third-party consultant's review. So the additional 5% that you're discussing as administrative is more the, the town staff's time, but really the whole thing is.
But Darrell, just to understand for a second, the four dollars per square foot, or, uh, four dollars per 1,000 square feet, right? That is designed for like a commercial structure, where there's probably a little bit more that goes into it? Is that my understanding or no?
Yes. So the, the rate structure, the fee schedule, is, has a couple of different categories. Like, you know, single-family home, you know, it's a smaller, well, it's a smaller projects, but the actual dollar per thousand is higher, they kind of count for that. And then you have commercial, and then there's like, you know, waiters and stuff like that. So there's really two main categories, single-family and commercial, kind of lumps that category, commercial and cultural development.
But to the town attorney's point, right? So we calculate fees based off of cost, right? So we arrived at, and it sounds like we did a pretty good job, the county adopted theirs the same way. So at four dollars per 1,000 square feet, right? That lead, that, that means there's underlying math that got us to that point, but yet the cost of this project is lower because of the scope of it. But I'm trying to understand why, why it's different, right? Because I think that's their request, is that it is different, or your claim is that it's different. And I want to understand how that's different from what we determined as our fee structure versus this project. Can you answer that, or is it kind of putting you on the spot?
No.
Okay.
Talk to me.
Yes, please.
Sure. So in terms of the scope, when I think about a commercial project or development or so forth, we're typically going to have a stormwater feature, a, a bio-retention, a submerged gravel wetland, you know, like.
That's what you led with, we don't have this and we don't have that, right?
Right.
Okay. So that's the differentiation, right?
Right. We're, you know, we're going through a report, we're checking calculations, we're checking models, you know, a lot of site grading, flow directions. Yeah, that's, that's.
So to their point, we don't have to do as much of that with this type of project, right? It's not that we're really changing the structure of how we assess stormwater fees, it's just that this particular project, if you're doing a solar farm, it may not have all those extra things. Is that what we're, what we're hearing?
Correct. There's, this is unique, that there is the, the MDE guidance to manage stormwater management for solar. It's, you know, a little three-page guidance that, you know, sets, you know, the, well, the guidance.
So is it maybe to Councilmember Nichols' point, when we have our fees, right, is it worthwhile for us to adopt the MDE's findings for handling storm, uh, stormwater for solar project as a special, like, class, so that, to my colleague's point, that we have a, that we have a standard, right? That we're not just changing it as a one-off because somebody wants a lower.
Well, I think the MDE standards, it currently have a market, I think the MDE standards, they don't address what fees should be charged by the town or family. They address.
How.
How it's done. Yeah.
So, um, yeah, MDE, but keep in mind, it's, it's a guidance document.
Right.
I mean, so, but, you know, we use it. It's a good guidance document, it's not, you know, they're saying what you're required to do. Municipality, counties kind of adopted it. The, um, the, how to address the, the fee for a stormwater project, I would add another category, you know, single-family, commercial, agriculture, solar. And you would establish a rate, you know, based on that.
Um, and if we established a rate, it would likely be lower if it was the same calculation. It would probably be closer to this 5,500 rate than the 20,000 rate. Is that what I'm understanding, based off of?
I would, that's fair. I think we would have to put, Mary, put this in there, in addition to the fee, some language, you know, what, what means a solar field, and, because you could have a solar field and you could manage, you know, you could have a stormwater facility, for some reason, in addition to the solar field, you have a, a sizable building.
Right.
You know, a much more pervert area, so for that, you're going to be a stormwater feature. So you have to, we have to choose that language, you know, so we don't, you know, handcuff ourselves to a very small budget, there is still enough use for a solar.
And so if we chose to adjust, adjust the rate structure here, should we place any caveats on that? If there, if the design were to change, or?
I would think.
To include a building or any of that stuff?
The, the conversation about how to set the fees and the qualifiers, that's a much deeper.
No, no, I'm saying for, if, just for to make it across the finish line tonight.
I got you.
Are there any caveats that we need to place on it, or is it approved kind of as the project stands now?
I would think you're approving a fee for this project, and, and.
In its current state?
Yeah.
Well, I'll just add to that. Steve, I feel bad talking, talking right behind your head.
Darrell, if you want, you could come up to the table.
Did our, did our Stephen in our office review any preliminary plans or anything? Were these just all verbal discussions?
So we have a concept plan ready to submit.
Okay.
But our client wanted us to address this review fee before we submit.
Okay.
But as you're saying, so stormwater facilities, it's, you know, essentially a big large disconnect on something.
That was, I want to make sure I understood that. So there, you said there's no large disconnect, as in like a building or something like that? Is that correct?
There are no.
Right, good. Okay. Just making sure we're all on the same page.
Let me just add this to the conversation. The county has done multiple solar field projects. When I was on the planning commission for the county, I think we gave anywhere from five to seven, and in no time did anybody request a production fee for this granted one. And so it would just never happen.
And so it would just never happen.
I think that Ryan found the same in talking to the county.
Yeah, that's what I was told today.
Can I just keep on?
I keep hearing this is a one-off, this is a one-off, but he's gonna be putting in a lot of effort and caveats for, for a one-off.
What do you mean by that?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, you're so fast talking, but I'm trying to get, like, you know, we need to put these conditions on the approval and we need to kind of adjust our, what a solar panel fee is. So what would happen if, I think Darrell alluded to this, what if there was a building with a mini-solar farm next to it? Like, how are we going to?
Well, that was part of the conversation for defining it and setting, you know, setting certain conditions and.
But for now, we've already have a fee schedule. We already determined what commercial is, and it is in line with the county, correct?
As far as I'm aware.
But my, the rationale for my asking those questions was because I wanted to box in that if, for some reason, they come later and they say, well, now we need a building, I don't want us on the hook for the plus of five thousand five hundred dollars if it's approved by the body. That's the reason I asked those questions.
Well, and if they're, if they made significant changes to the plan or changes in the future, it would require a whole new.
And it's, and I'm not, I'll just start this out here differently. You, you, not you, so it's written in here specifically what the impermeable surfaces are, which is two point nine nine, plus or minus two point nine nine acres. So if we took that calculation, that comes out at fifteen dollars per foot. So even then, we're still around, or higher obviously than nineteen thousand, but.
Oh, I don't, I don't think so. If you, if you calculated it based purely on impermeable at fif, at, it's fifteen per thousand. So you would come in, seven per hour.
I am correct, I apologize. Doesn't take up my mouth, but.
I mean, if, if it's not going anywhere, then we just need to tell them that.
Well, I hope it doesn't happen, but I have a motion.
We have a motion, but no second.
Yeah, you don't have to second it.
I have another question for Mr. Bass. He raised, he's our legal attorney. I think he's advising us that state law doesn't allow.
That's, I'm, I'm not advising you with that. I'm, I'm letting you know that there is, there is law and there is, there's case law, particularly. And as you see, and you're faced out in Washington City, by Washington City, making your fees so high, that it, it was much greater than the administrative cost of visual permits. And, and that is not, you're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, so to me, knowing that, and we don't know that on every fee on our schedule. You know, we don't, in this particular case, it's a case-by-case basis. Based on what I just heard there, what I read in here, I'll second Councilmember Nichols' motion.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols to reduce the stormwater review fee from nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents to five thousand.
For this case, so that the budget is.
Five hundred dollars for this case only. And working with for future cases to develop a criteria for a solar project with EA. On the basis of what we have heard from EA and town staff. And then we have a second by Councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
I get to vote tonight. So the rationale behind my vote on this is that I believe that we should have fees that cover the cost of the project as well as the review for staff. There should be no subsidy on the taxpayer themselves. But I can't justify asking a, a company to spend roughly twenty-five thousand dollars when we know that it's gonna come in closer to the five thousand dollar mark. So with that, I'm voting in favor of the reduction, both Councilmember Nichols and Councilmember Green. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
But I definitely see where my colleagues are coming from, that we need to have some criteria that spells that out for the future.
Well, and then, as you know, the intent was to have a review of the fees, it just didn't, didn't get the submissions on our fee.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Darrell. Up next is agenda item two C, and that's the motion twenty twenty-five dash sixty-seven, the approval of sludge press pumps, uh, stater?
Stater.
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 That's sound.
And Water Resources Director Jamie Lash to the runway.
So this pretty much keeps, helps keep the planning compliance for making sure we get the sludge out properly. And it had a very large tear in it, would not move sludge, we had to give emergency repair, replacement. If not, we would be in violation with MDE.
Thank you for helping us through that.
Can you explain exactly what a stater is?
So it's a part of a, it's a, it goes on a, a sludge pump, which is about as long as this havel. And it's about seven foot long, so it's, and then pump just, it's a screw, it's almost a big screw, it all is. And it's a rubber stater, but the chemicals and the stuff that go through wastewater heated up. And I'm just gonna remind you all, the plant was built in two thousand and ten. We replaced it in two thousand and seventeen, this whole thing, for seventeen thousand dollars. The pump, motor, stater, everything. As we speak today, it's thirty thousand and some change. Just keep that in mind, what, how much material has gone up. And I didn't get nothing, it's a safe one that we have, so it's not like I went and got something even more, so.
Don't tell Tyler that, because we were just discussing, he's gonna lose his first tooth. We were discussing the rate of the tooth fairy. And, and I said, well, buddy, I used to get a dollar, so we'll go through what the, what a dollar would equal inflationary-wise today. So yeah, I want to make sure I hedge that up, but don't, Jamie, don't share this with him. So, all right. Well, if I had anything to do with that formula, it's gonna be two dollars.
I have a friend who, I have a friend who's by tooth fairy and, and didn't check his pockets, and that was a very good day for that kid.
Well, there's precedent that I'm gonna have to establish with him for the other teeth that are to come. But, all right, let's see if we can action this. Any comment from the public regarding motion twenty twenty-five dash sixty-seven? Seeing none, we'll take a chunk of comments or approval from the council. So a motion by Councilmember Oris.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the director reflect with the motion unanimous with Vice President Beryl Abson. All right, thank you, Jamie. Up next is agenda item three, Town Administrator's Report and the Departmentals that are in the packet.
Just a reminder, most town offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving holiday. Friday, November twenty-eighth is ice ice Berlin and tree lighting. It's gonna be, there's quite a few ice sculptures this year. I think it's really gonna be a special event. It is gonna be cold, yes. Keep that in mind. Jimmy's hot here, so I'll remind all the yard waste.
Ice sculptures will last longer.
They will last longer.
That's true. December third and tenth are yard waste collection dates. Check the website for details on when your day is according to your regular trash collection schedule. It's, it's the season. Lots and lots of stuff coming up.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate it. Any questions for Mary regarding the Town Administrator's Report or the Departmentals that are in the packet?
Yeah, Mary, for your report on ongoing town hall renovations, you have Haley Architecture's meeting forward, bidding the project as discussed. What is, what does that mean exactly? Like, they're just, what's that?
The, the, uh, the bid documents will be released on December the eighth. There will be, the, the town will run an ad next week. It'll go on the website, all timed around December eighth.
Sure.
Mandatory pre-bid meeting for contractors is December the fifteenth, but I'm not sure about times. The, um, we just talked about, we've done some emails today about this. I cannot recall right now what the bid opening date is, but the intent is for presumably presentation for award at the February ninth meeting.
I can't recall either.
Yeah.
January twentieth.
Jan, January, yeah.
It was the second.
We pushed it a little bit.
Toward the end of January.
Yeah, but anyway, the expectation is February. And then they'll be in here with sludge铲, which I favor, but I'll be on vacation, I think so.
Everything breaks when Barry's on vacation.
Any other questions regarding Town Administrator's Report or Departmentals?
I just thought it was hilarious, the first-minded intent elective about the maple driver and the squirrel.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think people really realize the need to make those rodents, because that's what they are.
We had a raccoon, I think we climbed a pole at, um, in front of cheers.
Snakes will do it too.
Was that?
Snakes will do it.
Snakes, yeah, yeah.
All right, let's move on to public comment, and any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to comments from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Oris.
Oh, yeah, well, very cool. Thank you. So, I talk about.
How do you like today?
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm, thanks, guys. I, I don't want to bring it up to the next meeting, because that's closer to the holiday swing, but budget time will be around the corner, January?
I haven't heard about that yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But I would just like to offer to be one of the council members on the staff meetings that we usually, we've done the past couple of years with budget workshops or whatever you want to call it.
I'm gonna talk to Sarah about that.
Okay, all right, well, I'll talk to Sarah. We always send it to the group, but. Sure, well, I'll just throw it out there. I would also, can we ask the police department to maybe do some outreach slash education on our dog leash laws? I've been getting some, there's my staff on social media, but I've also gotten some personal calls and emails about unleashing dogs in, in our parks. And so I don't, I don't think it's anything malicious if we just do a little reminder.
And I would encourage anyone who encounters that to call the police. They don't look at it from a perspective of, I don't want to get someone in trouble, the police will come and talk to them and educate them. But, you know, they, they can't, they can't address it unless they know who it is.
Sure, so, okay, thank you. And then.
Oh, we can also ask them to push it.
Yes, yes.
And then I just want to follow back with something I believe Councilmember Nair brought up last meeting about the, about chairgate.
Man, I, I should have started with you. Councilmember Nichols.
I will end with a happy Thanksgiving. Since last meeting, I believe all of us have gotten some additional information. I know I've gotten emails and texts, and I, I took some time and read the state sidewalk pedestrian rulebook, whatever it's really called. And I'm just wondering, given this new information, and I'm just throwing it out here, is there a desire of the group? If there's even an inkling of we are in, we as a town are in a difficult position or a change, that we should talk about it again tonight?
I'm struggling, so I, I see this stuff periodically on social media, but.
Well, it's not just social media. I mean, we've got emails.
I, I've been included, I think, on all of them, and I think they all stem around the idea that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my interpretation of this is that if the town's gonna push out a policy that says no chairs, we should also say no, uh, no A-frame signs, no cafe tables, and some other things. And I, I get, I get that, right? But if there, the stance from the town has been that we gotta keep our sidewalks clear and capable for people to pass, right? I think even it was referenced during the last meeting by staff that it was one of the busier days of shopping that we have in town for businesses. So, um, working on the understanding that we're trying to keep the sidewalks open and accessible, which we have to do. I don't know if that's in the handle or not, but the, um, with that, I understand that the A-frame signs. However, I've asked the same people that if they encounter on a typical day where the A-frame sign or cafe table or something causes a barrier that is not ADA compliant, to let us know, and we'll share that with the planning department. And they can educate, like Mary said, educate the folks about the leashes, as well as educating people about, hey, look, we need this proper distancing so that people can be able to pass, right? So I don't know if it, I don't know if it truly keeps coming up, or we just keep giving air to the story, you know what I mean? Like, I think that the staff have worked diligently and collectively to be able to make sure that the sidewalks are passable, and we should stand behind them.
But this is a policy that clearly states it should be authorized or developed by the mayor and council.
What do you mean by that?
In the policy, it says that this policy is set by the mayor and council. We didn't have that opportunity to, to rehash it out, to discuss it, and I think we could engage in conversation when it's tonight and approved. But we'll get some kind of compromise for this, this one event, where people put our chairs. Doesn't have to be at six AM, but perhaps it doesn't have to be.
Well, what I'm struggling with is how do we compromise the ability, when we have people calling town hall that say, I can't get my wheelchair through and pass Main Street, like, on the sidewalks, how do we compromise that? Like, I, I don't understand where the compromise is.
The compromise is that you allow it at a certain cost. So it's for one day. I mean, it's been going on for years and years, and nobody has said.
But I mean, and I shared this with folks too, that I know it's, like, I've lived in Berlin my entire life. For me, like, I love seeing the chairs. I love seeing people line up and want to attend our town events early. I got that, right? I fully understand. However, Berlin has changed a lot since nineteen ninety. The ability for us to be able to accommodate the people, like, I can't walk down some days, especially during the holiday season like now. If I'm walking or out for a midday run, like, it is, it is packed. I have to go into the street to pass people. So if we take a busy shopping day, and we say, we love the chairs, which I love the chairs too, but it compromises the ability for people to be able to pass. And then it further creates a challenge when they end up getting thrown in the street, or vehicles can't pass. Like, then it becomes just a sidewalk issue, then it becomes a street issue as well with vehicular traffic.
Can I ask, have you been doing this? Why has this just come up now?
I can tell you that last year was the first time we had complaints from people in wheelchairs that said, I cannot pass. It's also the first time we had people throwing chairs into the streets, creating, literally. They couldn't pass, and they were launching the chairs into the street, and then the police department was having to be called.
Can I ask what policy you were referring to?
Came up, uh.
The, the one that the Berlin, that the police department posted, said.
That's, that's actually part of the town code. So yes, absolutely, the mayor and council, of course, always has the ability to review the code, but it has to be done through a legal process.
No, I think, I think that, I don't want to interrupt, I think that, I think what Jamie's referring to is the post that came out and said, town Berlin event policy.
I'm not, I'm not, I think I may have, this word it is, I don't know what that is.
In my personal opinion, that is a event policy, not necessarily a town Berlin, because the town, i.e. the elected folks, didn't talk about it.
Well, the thing is, is that I'd like, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not. Okay, I thought we were done.
I'm having my meal, let me, so.
Trick or thing.
So not, not that I'm saying, not that I'm saying that we want to, we should micromanage up here, but when this, to, to Councilor Nair's point, this has been going on for decades, and I understand, I understand the concern about the blockages and, and the, and the wheelchairs and the access. And I'm not saying I don't want that. I'm not saying anything to businesses, like, I don't want you to not have, I don't want to create a situation where you don't have business. That's not what I'm saying. This is one day. I don't agree, or I'm not, six AM, I think, is too early. I had said last week, I had talked with Ivy about asking, probably not this year, but asking to close the road earlier at three. I do believe that having all of this happen at five PM, regardless of blockages and, and everything, is going to cause more problems for staff, and it's going to be potentially another safety issue. Because you have roads that are already blocked, you have people, school kids get into their, their, think their floats. Fire companies are arriving.
None of that occurs before five PM. That's why, that's when.
I respectfully disagree with you. I, I respectfully disagree with you.
I said supposed to.
Yeah, because when I'm there, waiting at, at five, five-thirty, there's floats driving down, there's traffic, there's cars, there are people that are pulling out of like church parking lots. I am not saying that, there's parts of this policy that I do understand, but I just believe that having this come down a month before the event, a month and a half-ish, without any discussion, was a little challenging for us.
But we also have to understand, right? Like, not everything makes it to our level.
No, but I understand, I appreciate that.
But, and, and with that, we have to trust the folks that collaborated on it, economic development, health works, police department, administration. We have to trust that they took those things into perspective when they crafted the, the directive. And we have to stand by that in some ways, otherwise it is exactly what you're saying, micromanagement. Like, we should let them have that opportunity to see if it works. And next year, if we have trouble, if we find, hey, look, this didn't fix anything, it made things worse, then we take another crack at it. But right now, we've got a policy that has been pushed out. I think if we go altering it or changing it or playing with it, it sends the wrong message.
I will also add, we cannot close the road earlier than five PM because of the bank director. And we simply cannot.
And it's too early or too late in the game to be able to adjust that road closure at this point. So I think that with the information that we have, let's, let's see how it goes.
So after the event, on that note, if, can we hear from? So after the event, on that note, if, can we hear from Mary and the team on how it went?
Sure, of course.
Personally, if you have a concern about five o'clock, and then I honestly had to see it being a little, like, a little aggressive, just because there's going to be certain spots that people want by the stage, or want, and then, we need to go to hotel, but I would just like to hear the pros and cons, you know, if you've learned anything, is there, you know.
Well, there's lots of street frontage right down by the firehouse, if anybody thinks that.
Why wouldn't I be there now? Why must I be there?
That's a great spot though, I mean, and that's not even just me being sarcastic, but really and truly, I mean, I've been in this town a little bit longer than the mayor, but watching these things.
I'll agree with that, but not much, just a dare to.
Just a little bit.
Just a dare to.
But watching these things transpire and hearing this, I'm not belittling any of it. The ADA compliance is definitely a major concern every day of the week. But, the chairs, I know people want to be out, all of it is just, I don't know, I, I guess, I don't know. I think, I want everybody to be out there and enjoy the parade, but I'm going to tell you, it's going to be cold as all get up, so you get out there and sit in your chair on the front row, be it by the judges stand, or right up here by the Atlantic Hotel or wherever, but I guarantee you, most of us are going to be freezing our cheeks off and be ready to go home shortly thereafter. I, I can't see closing the streets much earlier than four, because Buckingham doesn't get out of school until about.
It's just here.
Today, I came through Berlin earlier coming home from work than normal, but Buckingham's buses are rolling through town at four oh five, four ten, so I couldn't imagine closing the street downhill a little bit earlier than that. And if it's a busy, I mean, I'm, I'm for everybody having the spots and seeing the parade, but I didn't know people were tossing things in the morning, and that, again, turns into a whole, like nasty, we're supposed to be, but everybody knows that Christmas, this is not as beautiful a season as people make it out to be, because this would be the ugliest size of folks come out, and I wish to goodness that those of us who live in this town and that visit for this parade would be the kind, show the kind of versions of themselves, but I guess, we're not seeing that in all instances. You know what I mean? If it's a matter of safety and you're pushing a chair, maybe, just maybe, but even then, like, I, that, that part blows my mind.
Well, and I think, I would also say is that it's not everybody, right? Like, we have, to this point, we've had chairs there for a long time, and it's not everybody that's acting silly, but it does create a lot of havoc when that does happen. So I think that seeing how things go, to Councilmember Green's point, reviewing it after the fact, we, we've done this too with the parking lot, right? The Parking Subcommittee knows, you see how it goes, and then we learn from our, our mistakes, or we learn what worked well and what didn't, and then we can adjust course.
Well, you know what works really well? Keeping Santa at the end of the parade. Can we put it back at the end? Is it going to be at the end?
I believe that it should be at the end, both people want it at the front, so.
Why? Listen.
Here's the thing, everything, every position that, that you hear about, there is someone on the other side with the exact, just as passionate position on the flip side, and it's impossible, impossible to make everyone happy. Does not matter what we do, we're going to hear from the other side.
But Berlin Christmas parade has Santa at the end, always has, always should.
Alright, now, anything else?
Yeah, there's, so, well, with that conversation, I just obviously I want to make sure that kids understood that what I'm saying is, it's not because I don't trust that, and I don't think you're not doing your good job, it's just things that are a concern to me. So, also piggybacking on that, will we be able to get the sidewalk by the museum on Main blocked off for wheelchair access only?
I don't think so. And the reason is, is that we looked at, when we were looking at doing the auction side of things, we were looking at the ability to auction off maybe some prime seating. That was one of the early discussions, and I remember that staff on the call said, hey, look, we don't really have the volunteers we need currently, we really will not have the volunteers to handle a section of seating, so it would, in essence, be the same thing. We really don't have the staff time to do that. We are working on the ability to try and make sure that we have some handicap parking over at the lot, but that's, that's probably the most that we can do with the volunteers that we have on hand. Wouldn't you agree?
I, I do, and, and, and kind of two things to, to Councilmember Nichols' question about Santa. The parents of little kids complain that Santa came too late. So there's your exact opposite, you know.
It's just like Christmas night comes when they're asleep.
Right, and as to the number of volunteers, for instance, the, the place where I have been stationed for years now, I've had three volunteers, leaving two others. This year I'll be by myself, which is fine, but that tells you about how we're experiencing such a reduction in volunteers. And of course, they asked me to be by myself because I've been doing it, I know what the routine is, and other, they have to spread their volunteers out with more thought, because there aren't so many to go around.
But now, if we can help boost volunteers in the future, then that's something we can do look at for next year. So, anything else?
Well, this is the last meeting before the said Christmas parade, so I hope to see everybody at the events that we have, and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Gobble gobble. And that is all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Green?
Man, that's a place.
Can I ask if we can adjust the flow? Next time I'm not doing it.
No, they're voting for it, by the time it gets here, we'll have forgotten what I had to say.
Yeah, just, I'm going to be short, I just, I knew earlier today it was announced that the chief's retirement, and it's been really nice to see the comments that he's gotten on social media, I think it's been, hopefully, heartwarming to him. You know, my experience with the chief, you know, I've only been up here three years, so I've known him really more as a community member than more than a chief, but, you know, especially in a small town, everybody knows who the chief is, you know, whether he's crossing kids on Halloween at the crosswalk or not, but you know, he, I was interested in his press release when he said how it was, for him, very important to be the community aspect side of things, you know, where he was serving as the, one of the founders of the Cricket Center, and has been involved in worship youth for many years, so, you know, certainly wishing well in retirement, and looking forward to the process that will unfold afterwards. So, I know he's not here tonight, but we missed, have to mention that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols, we'll go to Councilmember Nair.
Yeah, I was, two things in regards to the police department. I'd like to first off say thank you to the officers that did assist with the young person who was, I can't say they were young, well, I guess I can, because it says yes, of the young person who was considering or contemplating suicide. Thank you all, I mean, I might, in that moment, I don't know what that person felt, but I know as a parent to young men and women, I say thank you for at least giving them enough time to know that their child was in crisis. So that means a great deal. And to the chief, there aren't enough words to say how impactful you have been to the town of Berlin in your time in service. We definitely appreciate you and the years, and wish you well in retirement and enjoy life, because, you know, you only get one time around this service, and I hope that the rest of your ride is remarkable.
Thank you. Wollser, Councilmember Nair?
First of all, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Second of all, Christmas parade, are we walking, riding?
It's still on my calendar.
What are we doing for the Christmas parade?
You're walking on your hands. So, it's in my comments, but I did want to say that we will be joined leading the parade with the soccer teams from Stephen Decatur, who won states, so they will join us leading the parade like the football team did. With that, the mayor and council walk together every year, we'll continue that together. We don't have a float entry or any of that stuff this year, but we are walking together. Carson's got the flag, I hope.
Awesome, he'll love that.
So, yeah, you there be square.
Perfect. Is Carson going to try kit?
He'll probably try kit.
I like that.
Next up, I had the pleasure of being part of the interview process for UnCall Engineering Services, both Stone Water and General Engineering Services. It's quite a process, we interviewed a lot of great companies, and a lot of information was conveyed and a lot of information to read, so I was real pleased to be part of that process, and I guess it's also been.
Pay attention, pay attention, it's for awards, separate.
Yes, great. And once again, like everybody else, congratulations to chief, he served with honor and distinction for many, many years in this town, and he certainly was loved by everybody, so, happy retirement to the chief.
And Wollser?
Yes. So I'll piggyback on the mayor's comments, we'll segue into that, and I'll keep in lockstep with my colleagues, thanking the chief of police for his work serving the Berlin community, helping work collaboratively every day with our businesses, our, our town departments and representing the citizens of Berlin. You can't ask for anything more from a chief of police. And I had the honor to work with him in the capacity as a council member and the mayor, but also as a career firefighter and paramedic in Berlin, so we have a long time going back, back together, and to think about the fact that he became the chief and I was only a couple of years old, so really, I've never had a different chief of police, it would be weird. But yes, definitely after thirty-plus years anywhere, well-deserved retirement, and we wish him the best. We'll segue into happy Thanksgiving, my colleagues said it, but I'll reiterate it, wishing everybody the time with their families and enjoyment of the holiday. We have the tree lighting the next day, so with that, in conjunction with the Christmas parade this year, we'll be moving, so the Christmas parade, we walk together, right? We will be moving the tree lighting portion of the event from the balcony of the Atlantic Hotel to the side of the tree, so that hopefully we can accommodate the entire council, if you're available, to join us on the stage for lighting the tree. I like how we've come together to walk in the Memorial Day parade, we've come together to walk in the Christmas parade, and I think another thing that's important is that unity in lighting our town Christmas tree, so I appreciate that, we like the menorah together, and I think this will be something else, that'll just be another tradition that we can do together. With that, I do want to thank Alan and Charles from our electric department for going to source the town Christmas tree. I have heard from some members of our community that it's a little smaller than in years past, that is true. The tree is a little smaller, however, you'll find that consistently, except for in Rehoboth, nurses have normally large, that the Christmas trees that are of a larger variety are a little harder to source. So, when we ran into that challenge, Alan reached out to the Christmas Tree Association for Maryland, and was given some lists of some farms that might have some, some trees that would fit our needs. A lot of what we were finding was that we could find a tree size that we have currently, or we could get in the thirty-five foot range, and if you put a thirty-five foot Christmas tree there, it's not going to work. So, I really think that this year, the tree looks a lot like a Christmas tree and a lot less like a Christmas bush, and it's very, very pretty, I think it's probably the prettiest tree we've ever had. And then I want to thank the town staff that came together to, to hang the wonderfully painted ornaments by the schools and our citizens of Berlin. Now features all the oyster shells that were painted and helped drill by my colleagues up here on the council, and threaded by the Public Works Department with beautiful gold pipe cleaners, and it's all on the tree now and in the garland that surrounds the hotel. So, it looks really pretty. My living room was overcome with bows, so I thank my wife for tying all of those, and she tried to enlist my services, but none of the bows that I tied made it to the tree, they looked so horrible. And then I want to thank the Public Works Department again for putting the tree collar around the tree today. Cody and the team helped build a wooden tree collar that'll, that is around the tree now, it looks really pretty. Underneath of that, and we'll talk about that when we light the Christmas tree, is a nice, beautiful, new Christmas tree stand by Ashton Welding, so he did a phenomenal job with that, it looks, looks amazing, it even says town of Berlin on it, which is really cool. Yeah, it's pretty neat.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, very impressive. But it, it worked out really well. Last year we had a tree that fell on town staff, so this year, making sure that didn't happen and safety focused, it really worked out well. We also have a tree topper that's going to be coming from the Worcester Technical High School, they're building an acrylic town seal that'll go on top, so it'll be pretty cool. But yeah, I look forward to seeing everybody at the tree lighting on Friday.
What time is the tree lighting, Mayor?
Oh goodness, Mary, can you help me tell now?
By the way, you can tell them what time the party is.
Friday.
Yeah, Friday evening.
Friday evening.
After dark.
I think it's six o'clock, but I don't want to mistake it.
The sinking six, but yeah.
I don't want to mistake it. So let's see. Oh, I also want to thank my colleagues, led by Councilmember Green, they went down to the commissioner meeting last Tuesday to advocate on increasing the room tax, so I want to thank you all for that, it was a successful position that we took on that, and the county adopted the increased room tax, so that does yield itself to some increased revenue for the town of Berlin, so thank you all for it. Alright, I think that's everything, we'll move on to comments from the press.